Good evening, like to call to order, oh this is turned up high, this is nice. Call to order the select board meeting for June 20, 2018. No changes to the agenda tonight, announcements Libby?
Thank you, this meeting is being video and audio recorded and we have a public presentation tomorrow night, June 21st, here in this room at 6 o'clock about the three proposed intersection improvements with roundabouts.
I think it's in the LGI room, isn't it?
I'm sorry, LGI room, scratch that, LGI, not here. Tomorrow night at 6, this is maybe the second or third of a few public meetings about these projects, so hopefully people are interested, they can attend. And we're going to hear a bit about our 4th of July preparation plans from events and police.
Good evening, Charles Gibson, Police Department. You've got copies of the plans that we've had used for prior years, so hopefully this year is going to be the same thing. We've seen a somewhat decline in activity for the past three years that we've been doing this, hopefully it continues. We don't anticipate any major changes and will respond in the same way as we've had before. We've had a lot of cooperation from all the neighbors and town departments and coordinated effort, it seems to be working. Again, we have 20 state police troopers coming out on the 4th to assist us and the state police also signed two extra state police offices for Nantucket for the summer, so we should be in fairly good shape. We'll see how it goes. Any questions?
Just a comment, I know what seemed to be effective, I guess maybe last year or the year before was media coverage. We had some coverage from the Boston Globe that, you know, where town officials stated that if you're looking for a party on July 4th, don't come to Nantucket. And there was also a fair amount on social media, so I don't know if there's a way to kind of focus on that again, because that's how kids find out about these things.
Well, we've already started our social media sites, we have a couple of officers that have done the Facebook, Twitter. We'll send out the press releases again to the Cape Cod Times and hopefully the wire services and they'll pick it up and the Boston Globe will pick it up as well, usually mentioning summer and Nantucket, key words usually get some attention on the wire services and we'll see. You know, again, we had press releases last year, we had radio interviews that we would done with Cape stations and with the local station and hopefully we'll get the same response from the media. We put it out there and hopefully they'll respond.
Great. Thank you.
Amy, are you gonna say anything about prep or anybody, any other departments? Okay, so there's, Paula?
Yeah, just so the board and the public, the NRTA will be running additional bus service to jetties from the fireworks, starting at Broad Street at 6:00 PM until after the fireworks show, so that's a good way to get down there without driving.
I've done that a couple times, it's so easy.
Oh, good.
Paula, I know some years you guys would do extra buses to Surfside and the nobody area just to get, to move people?
Yep.
Do you guys do that?
We have not been contacted by the police department for any emergency management type purposes. If it's a gorgeous day, we ourselves will probably put an extra Surfside beach bus on just for the demand and the capacity issues that we deal with.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, as an aside, culture and tourism has, with Florencia's help, our public outreach coordinator, some flyers about the events that are going to be happening on 4th of July, and we really would like to try to emphasize to people, please do not bring your water balloons downtown on the 4th. They shatter and the shards get into the storm drains and it's a real big mess, so we know they're fun and all, but they're not fun for the environment.
And when they go in the storm drains, they go right into the harbor.
Correct.
Right, so just picture plastic water balloons in the harbor. All right, on the public comment, is there anyone here tonight to speak about something that's not on the agenda? Seeing none, I don't know of any new business. Approval of minutes for May 23rd, your motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Approval of payroll warrants and treasury warrants?
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's approved. Pending contracts?
Move approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, that motion, do you want to comment on anything?
Well, yes, just quickly, there are a lot of them, so I just wanted to let you know, because there were so many, I just wanted to break them down a tiny bit. We have one memorandum of understanding for the use of town property, that is the Salt Marsh Senior Center for Weekly Nutrition Programs. There are six agreements for police officers to go to the police academy. We have five date extensions, non-monetary, four renewal contracts for island-wide water quality testing, NCTV, Bob's Uniform for the police department, and Nantucket Safe Harbor for Animals for the kennel services for stray animals. We have one training contract for OSHA driving safety for various departments, three contract amendments. These contracts are for our engineering firm to do some additional visualizations of the three roundabout projects. And we have four new contracts or contracts that are being increased in cost for electrical plumbing. We've got software being developed for our capital improvement plan and a minor contract for a long pond health study, just what, so you, no, Paul's up.
There's a lot going on. Okay, over to consent items, gift acceptance from the fire, for the fire department?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion is unanimous. Citizen Department request, Finance Department request for approval, issuance of bond anticipation notes for new fire station in Nantucket Harbor Shimo plus parcels, sewer extension capital project.
Good evening, so I know a couple of weeks ago we were before you for the sale of some notes and we received some pay recs that in our analysis of what we needed to borrow actually exceeded what we had done. Fortunately, we were able to get a sale turned around in a relatively short order, so we're asking for the approval to issue bands the amount of $5.5 million. They were sold to Eastern Bank at a rate of 2.75, when you factor in the premium, it actually is a net interest charge of 1.6%, which is actually lower than the previous sale that we had about three weeks ago.
What's the delta in the increase, recs, pay recs you said?
The fire station, the last rec that came in, which we had been averaging about 500 to 600,000 was actually double, it was about 1.2 million, so we hadn't anticipated such a fast ramp up in the amount. And then the same with Nantucket Harbor Shimo, as they're getting closer to the end of the work, at this point they, there was a much larger pay rec than we had thought that would be coming through.
And how much was that?
I think it was in the 1.3, 1.4 million dollar range as well.
No comments? Motion? Move approval? Do you need a?
Yes.
You gotta read it?
Yes.
Just dated, dated June 23rd.
Yes.
Do you have it in front of you, Don?
Yeah. Do I have to, I don't have to, I can reference the one that's on.
Yes.
So I'll second Matt's motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, request for approval of bus shelter locations, Paula's here to talk about that.
Yes, good evening. As you may or may not know, over the past few years, the NRTA's been working with Remain to put up some bus shelters for our passengers. We currently have ones at the Muse and the Tom Nevers Roadstop, and they're very anxious to hopefully do some more now that we're providing year-round service to kind of winterize some shelters, provide heat during the winter months and certainly coverage from the elements. So we've identified several areas, a few of those are on town-owned land, which brings me before the board for approval. The two that we have identified as, I guess, priorities, for a fully covered, partially enclosed, element-protected shelters at 150 Orange Street at the Landmark House, that one would require board approval, and 112 Pleasant Street at Cape Cod, next to Cape Cod 5 in that grass area, which does not require board approval because it is on private land. I did touch base with the Landmark House Director and she contacted her board members and they think it's a great idea and weren't opposed to that, they had the concept drawing so they know what that's going to look like. And I've also been in touch with the property owner, Cape Cod 5, and they seem willing to want to, they support the shelter and seem willing to want to enter into an agreement with the NRTA for it at that location. And the desire was to do a few more, so we looked at some of the more heavily used stops that includes Macy Lane and Old South Road, Bartlett Road and Friendship Lane and Somerset Road and Raceway Drive. These would also require board approval. We don't know yet if all three of those locations would be constructed in 2018 or in some out years, depend on the cost of the shelters and the funding that Remain has available to do those. With a couple of those locations, the Macy Lane and Somerset Road in particular, those are very narrow spaces, so the ability to do a closed-in shelter would not be viable at those locations, so it wouldn't be one that's like at the Muse, it would be more of a, if you can picture the bench at the stop, it would be more of a covered roof, open on four poles type of drawing which you had in your packets.
Building D.
That you have in your packets. Remain has been working with Emeritas for the design of the shelters, they will do the HDC approvals and be responsible for the construction of the shelters and the installation of the shelters, so that process will be starting once we, once we get the approvals. I don't know, I think that, oh, any that you approve on town-owned land would require the town signature, so I would recommend that we authorize Libby to be the signer on that, like we did with the, with the other ones. So other than that, I think, any questions?
Any questions, comments?
Oh, the shelters look great. I like the heated seat one. Especially this.
We have to see what technology's gonna work best, but it's amazing what's out there actually.
Yeah, no, they look really nice.
Yeah, thank you.
Once they're built, who maintains them?
Oh, yeah.
The NRTA does.
Okay.
And actually, that reminds me, one question I had was, are there going to be garbage bins in there?
You know, no. We tried garbage bins at different locations, Fairgrounds Road, animals, seagulls get into them, people dump their personal trash, so if someone else wants to do that and maintain that, that's fine, but the NRTA does not.
And would it be something where you just do a regular swoop to make sure there isn't garbage in there?
Yeah, we have, we do a constant bus stop maintenance for trash.
Okay.
And we have receptacles on the bus as well, so hopefully, we'll put them in there.
Hopefully, yeah.
Any thoughts or comments? Libby, do you need a motion to give you approval to?
I think there should be a motion and your approval, I think, should be contingent upon the NRTA taking on the maintenance, any capital repairs that if ever needed in the cleanliness.
Yeah, that's the agreement with Remain and I, yep, or Remain and the NRTA.
I'd make a motion to approve the structures with Libby signing and the NRTA continuing the maintenance.
And repair.
Maintenance and repair.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Okay, request for sewer privilege fee policy interpretation. Do you want to start this, Libby, or walk us through?
I don't know if the individual who requested it is here, but doesn't exactly look like it.
So do you want to just move to another topic?
Well, yeah, we can move it to the next thing, I want to just disclose that this is my brother-in-law, Jim Outen is married to my wife's sister, so if it's more appropriate for me to abstain, I can, I'll speak as a private individual, or if we speak about the topic in general, I can discuss it.
I think disclosure's fine, I'd rather have us voting and disclosing.
I don't know if you want to wait for him, or I can explain it a little?
It's the pleasure of the board.
Do you want to just put it up till later in the meeting?
Yeah.
Unless we're done.
And if they don't arrive, then we'll just table it. Okay, so moving on to the public hearing, so I'd like to open the public hearing to consider application for modification of entertainment license for Farrow 17 Broad, DBA Grayden House. Hi, Amy.
Good evening, this application, as you said, is for Grayden House at 17 Broad Street, modification of their entertainment license. Last year, if you remember, we, they were approved to alter their premises for the liquor license, which extended the liquor license to include the outdoor patio, we have photos there too as well. It allows for dining and food service and alcohol service out on the patio, it was approved for the liquor license and it's also per their special permit. This request is to add music in the outdoor premises, currently they just have a license for background music indoors, it's not live music, it is for background music. Per the special permit, we're recommending kind of along the lines of what the special permit allows for, which is background music for dinner service only. I did mention we had some complaints because it was being played with no one out there and without a license. There's been some change in management, we've worked with them, I've worked with their attorney too as well, and we've kind of worked on that. They called me within seven minutes of sending the warning out, so they did this immediately to see that they can adjust that entertainment license. So that is a request, I believe I'll let Brian speak to that, that the request is for dinner service during the week, perhaps earlier hours on the weekends, so it's not to disturb those that are working. The town building is right there, it can be heard. One other point too that we want to make sure is that music is not played, similar to the situation we had with Town Restaurant last year, this is an annual license, when there's no one there, that's what we saw, that it was just being played loudly, it wasn't for dinner service, it was just to attract people probably. That was the one caveat that we would say, yes.
Okay.
Good evening, for the record, Brian Swann, attorney for the applicant. As Amy stated, this is an amendment to a previously granted entertainment license, and my client is seeking to add low-level exterior music that's compatible with fine dining. That's a restriction that was imposed by the planning board on their special permit amendment. There's really three operative instruments that restrict the use of this premises. One is the entertainment license, which provides for a level-two entertainment interior, no exterior entertainment. The special permit provides that the patio can be used between the hours of 7:00 AM and midnight, with the caveat that after 7:00 PM to midnight, that the patio only be used for dinner services to guests seating, sitting at tables and chairs. And liquor license provides that the only exterior alcoholic beverage service can be done to patrons sitting at tables and chairs. In the staff report, there was attention brought to the fact that my client had at one point removed tables and chairs and replaced them with a couch. Since that was brought to his attention, he has removed the couch and replaced the couch with tables and chairs. And he did play music in May when that wasn't a permitted use under his entertainment license. We're here to ask for your permission to play low-level exterior music after, during dinner service through the week and then on the weekends for a sooner time. You know, we understand that it could be disturbance to the town building or other businesses in the area. My office is within a stone's throw of this building, so I'll be, you know, well aware if anything is louder than normal, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have related to any of the permits.
Do you have new photos? I didn't get by there today.
Yeah, we did, he sent them this afternoon, taking the, it just replaced with, yeah, you have it printed?
It's black and white, so it wouldn't.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board, comments?
I suppose the issue in May, it wasn't so much that it wasn't their entertainment license, it was that it was too loud?
It was both. The license specifically said no exterior entertainment or music, and there were three speakers outside, so it was, you know, it would be a violation of the entertainment license. It specifically said that, as did, I think, initially the special permit, so I sent a warning and, like I said, they responded immediately and we went to this route.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, my recollection from the last time we talked about this was that it was very important to the planning board and this board with the location and the tight, tightness of this property in the size of its patio and wide open to the sidewalks going by and residences, that it was just, people were very worried that it ever get anything beyond people actually sitting at tables having dinner and hearing very light noise in the background. That it was just very, very clear that it not become a bar service situation, even sitting at tables, that it's people who are eating.
The type of entertainment?
I just want to stay true to the original discussion a bit.
Understood and agreed. This is just for background music, unamplified, no live music on the exterior, just background music that the planning board termed compatible with fine dining, so I can imagine something along like a piano bar-type music, just piped in through a couple speakers.
What time's the last seating?
The last seating's at 10:00 PM. We addressed a concern that it could appear to be used as bar service, so that the couch is removed. The town can enforce the restriction of alcohol service to patrons through the planning board or through Amy, there's two avenues to do so, and my client has every intention to comply with that restriction.
Just for Amy, so, so they can't serve alcohol to people unless they're having a meal?
Correct, it's for dinner, people who are dining solely for that purpose. They can't be standing out there having drinks like a bar.
But they can't, they can't be, they can't come in and, and sit down and have a cocktail while they're waiting for something, even if there are chairs, tables and chairs.
Correct.
So how do you, I mean, I think that's a pretty onerous on you or whoever to have to, you know, regulate that.
To police it.
So how do you, how do you do that?
Well, I don't, we haven't really had that sort of issue with them, it has been for dinner service. You know, if we went there and there were noise complaints and you could tell there was congregation and that sort of thing, they have time limits on that, like you said, the last seating, I believe, is at 10:00, to be finished before midnight, so that they're not out there past that. You know, we haven't had an issue with that thus far.
I think these situations, I think, we're sort of protected a little bit because they have, they have people living above, so they're not going to be too loud. But I think, you know, I think a lot of businesses think that the downtown, you can do whatever you want because it's downtown, you might be able to do it right in the middle, but you really shouldn't, but on the edges, you certainly can't. And we've got situations where businesses are butting right up to residences and we get a lot of complaints. And in the past, we, you know, when we've had to act, we've taken the licenses away, we've cut, we've dropped the hours way back, so if we approve this, I think it's sort of in double secret probation here, because if something happens, we should be taking it away. I mean, if there are transgressions this summer, I think we should take it away because we have to worry about the other neighbors who live nearby. And so I just think that's, you know, I'm willing to support it because I think they're doing everything they're supposed to do, I think you're happy with it, but I think it should be with the caveat that they've got to really play ball.
Amy, I have a question.
Yep.
If Matt's example was to be approved?
Right.
What's the process if it's violated or not?
Right.
If you get one phone call from any neighbor, is that enough? Is it multiple?
Not them, but, yeah, I mean, I think traditionally, and we're trying to put this in writing, obviously, make it a policy, but traditionally it's been three verified complaints to bring in, if I'm correct. That's kind of how it's gone in the past, a couple that we have done was three verified complaints, meaning police were called, someone was called, and it was verified that it was being loud or it was whatever, you know, that, that is, and we've gone back and forth on the decibel level and it's difficult to measure and that sort of thing. At this point, we have brought them in for less, some of the licenses say one time, Crew has a caveat on theirs, one complaint, and they can be brought in for that because of past actions. So I have already gotten, I've spent today talking to several people about several different, not them specifically, but I'm speaking with residents in that area.
I think I just want to know what the process was?
Right.
On Matt's example.
Traditionally, we have set it at three verified complaints.
Don, you had something?
Just, just making sure that we're clear on what we're approving, they can do cocktail service during the day on the weekends.
If they're serving, yeah, when they have brunch and lunch, correct, correct.
Just because I remembered that, that it was at night that it had to be during dining. And?
I think, I think it has to be during dining for, during the day too.
No, it wasn't, not in the.
Correct, so what we're asking for, and I think we discussed this earlier, is per the special permit and their definition of the light background music for fine dining is agreeing to dinner service, so 5:00 PM for, during the week, and they have requested possibly earlier, I would assume noon, you know, for lunch service through dinner service on Saturday and Sundays, when the town building and other businesses aren't operational. So that would be the restriction, would be the light background music 5:00 PM on during the week and noon on Saturday and Sunday. That's a request.
But there's no cocktail-only service at any time?
I remember us talking about that when they came in before, that in the afternoon, they could serve a glass of wine outside.
I mean, they can't.
With a meal, with a meal.
No, without a meal. And I believe I read that.
That they can't without a meal? It's not supposed to be just for dining service?
Or something, but that was limited to at night, but, okay.
Yep.
But is the proposal to stop the music at 11?
We can, we can set that, yeah, absolutely. And again, it's the same thing that we have with town, whereas.
And it's a level one.
Correct, correct, light background music.
Level two inside, right?
Inside, they can't have live music either inside. Are you, were you requesting that too as well?
No, I think it says on the face of the entertainment license, they can have acoustic music, not live amplified music. So we just want level one on the exterior?
Yeah, yeah.
And keep the existing license as is with that addition.
So the addition is outdoor? No, it would just be level one outdoor?
Right, okay.
Just a couple of comments, hopefully piano bar music was maybe not the greatest example because it's not a piano, right?
Correct.
No, that was.
I just want to mention to the board that I, and I totally understand people like to hear nice, soft music while they're dining, that's great, I like to hear it too. This establishment specifically said, representing, representing when they were initially approved, there would be no exterior entertainment or speakers, okay? So we've had a lot of transition, management transition with this establishment, and in the past month, we've had entertainment creep, I would say. The couches, the tables were replaced with couches, we had the lab music situation and it was blaringly loud. I very much appreciate them taking care of it immediately, but we've seen some issues already, we don't have any guarantee that current management is long-term or anything like that, so I would just really caution the board to be careful when approving things like this, because there are a lot of issues with downtown restaurants where music has gotten louder and louder and louder and it just started out like this.
Yeah, I read the minutes too, it was, it was pretty clear, but, so I, I think, I personally stand by their earlier commitment.
Jim, you mean the early commitment to have no music outside? Is that your recommendation? Well, based on what they said to get what they got last year.
If you have any questions, we'll close the public hearing if there's anything else that Amy or Brian wants to say.
I would say, certainly when you're considering this too, we can certainly put a caveat on there like we have on some others, that should there be any violation of what you approve, it can immediately be brought to your attention, rather than three, you know, we have traditionally done that and some we do have that on there because of past, so that's, you're an option.
Before we close the public hearing, is there anyone else here that'd like to speak? Before we close the public hearing, is there anyone else here that'd like to speak on this subject? Okay. Brian, you okay?
Yep. Um, just to thank you for your time and, you know, it's in the downtown jurisdiction. My client has every intention to comply with the restrictions in place and we'd ask that you approve the license shown to our request.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll close the public hearing for the board discussion or a motion. Or a motion with a second word for discussion.
I'm willing to approve it with, uh, with one, just sort of one, one transgression, it goes away. I'm willing to put them on a short leash for this season. Cause the three, sometimes the three transgressions is a high bar because you, you know, they have, someone has to call them in, it has to be seen. There's different things that happen. And so sometimes we're getting a lot of complaints and we're hearing a lot of scuttlebutt, but you go to the record and there's not really anything there, but we know that there's been issues. And so, uh, you know, so I think if there's one, you know, one major issue, I think we could, you know, we should be, have it back here and be discussing it. And that would ensure that they would take it seriously for this season. So my motion is to do, is to approve it with those stipu- that stipulation.
Okay. Is there a second for discussion?
Can I just ask a clarification there, Matt? When you say one transgression, is that specifically for noise or would it be for cocktail service only or is it any transgression or is it-
Any transgression that Amy feels is a, you know, a major transgression and a major, you know, putting the couches back out, having a, you know, having a, you know, a, a, you know, sort of a, you know, some sort, you know, some wine party outside or, you know, anything like that, that, you know, is, is sort of not in keeping with a, uh, with a quiet restaurant attached to an inn. Anything that's, you know?
Just, so you guys are aware, the way it reads in the planning board special permit is the outdoor dining area porch and patio may be used between 7:00 AM and 12:00 midnight, provided however that between 7:00 PM and midnight, it can only be used for dining and not bar service. That means from 7:00 AM until 7:00 PM, it can be used for strictly bar service. Is my interpretation of that.
That's correct, but the liquor license is another restricted device.
Yeah, no, no, I know, I know. I just want to make sure that everybody knows the whole package. I would be a little bit more comfortable if we started with doing, um, an entertainment license from five to 10:00 every day and see how it goes this summer.
So where are we? Do we got a motion on the table?
We got a motion on the floor.
We got a couple of comments. So since people are making comments, I think five o'clock's-
I would accept hers as a friendly amendment with the one strike option I had.
So one strike in five to 10, seven days a week? Is that, you want to make that motion?
Well, adding it to his.
Is there a second for discussion?
Yes.
A second for discussion.
Okay. Any thoughts?
Jim?
Jim, you saying?
Well, you know, I'm, I'm really sympathetic to what Libby said. I know it's been a real issue with the people, town employees who are working on the area. I know it's so unsure, it's sort of, cause those are the folks that have been really vocal about it. And I think as board members, I know I want to be very sensitive to that. Certainly five o'clock, I know, I know people, you know, when five o'clock comes around, you know, they're not all just turn the lights out. There's people working after five, so I have a concern about that timeframe. Um, and to me, it's more of a, um, I won't say ethical, but to, if, if I, I would want, if I were applying for a license for my business, I would want to make sure that I had done in the previous 12 months, everything I needed to do, especially if I was contemplating coming in and making a significant change to the app, to the, uh, to the license I had in a, you know, previous year. Um, and instead, we've heard behaviors that, uh, don't really, um, create an environment where, um, I, I feel that there, it, there's a readiness for them to come in. We've had the, you know, the loud music with no one there. We've had the, you know, and we've had the couches, we've had, I mean, so, and those are the things we know about. So I just don't think that their, uh, their behavior is such that we should grant them this extension. If they have a year where they're, you know, it's above reproach, then they come back, but I, I can't support it for this year.
Any thoughts?
I'm, I'm hesitant for the same reasons Jim mentioned, but I do think it's a little bit to have had the issue in May, uh, May, not just because it was a violation of the entertainment license, but because someone there wasn't, um, paying attention to how loud the music was. I, I think that, like Libby mentioned, there's a lot of changeover in management and just making sure that all these, all these caveats that we're putting, that that is trickling down to everyone that works there. That's, that is my concern.
I just don't, I don't want to be so restrictive on a business when I could be sitting in my residence until 10:00 PM and playing music on my porch. That's what, that's why I said 10:00, because that's what our noise ordinance is. I mean, there, people can be actively doing construction all summer from 7:30 in the morning till 10:00 at night. So I just, I think that it's, ending at 10:00 is fair and starting at 5:00 is fair because that's dinner.
Thank you. Um, just to bring to the board's attention, which I'm sure you already know, I mean, Amy has her finger on this pulse and she works with every single restaurant, every licensee, you know, the staff, she recommended that you approve this. You know, Matt's caveat with the one strike, I, I think that would be an appropriate, um, motion for you guys to approve.
I think we decide what's appropriate, but that's, that's all right.
So any other comments? All right, ready for a vote? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, that motion passes three to two.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, town managers report.
Do you want to go back to the rest of your-
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Yes. All right, we are back to the request for sewer privilege fee policy interpretation. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. Apologize for my tardiness earlier. Appreciate the consideration. My name is Jim Houghton and along with my partner, Tom Piemonte, uh, we own a property at 32 Crooked Lane. Um, and we recently received an invoice from the town for $6,322 for the sewer privilege fee for the pool cabana that we built on our property. We were surprised to receive this invoice because we had already paid the sewer privilege fee for the main house and that's the only dwelling that's on the property. The cabana that we built is, well, it's little more than an outdoor powder room. It's under a gazebo roof, um, and supported by post, it's open on all sides. The interior dimensions of the powder room are six feet by seven feet. And I actually have some photographs here that illustrate.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Thank you.
So you see, there's even in the very back, the actual floor plan that shows you that it's just the only, the only part that actually contributes to ground cover is the powder room itself. Everything else is open. After receiving the invoice, I, for the privilege fee, I, I looked into like what documentation I could find that would spell out under what circumstances a privilege fee is assessed. The only written documentation I could find was the April 28, 2005 communication from the select board stating that sewer privilege charges would be assessed for those unconnected properties in the town sewer district or needs areas. So I guess my first thing, the first reason I'm here tonight is to ask the select board if they would please clarify the meaning of unconnected properties. I've always considered the definition of a property to be the whole property. 32 Crooked Lane, MAP 3041, parcel 331. But maybe the property is the dwelling, single primary dwelling, a secondary dwelling, or in some cases even a tertiary dwelling. Under no reading of property have I ever said, thought it means any structure on a property because that doesn't make sense to have properties on properties. Returning to my cabana, I understand the intention of assessing privilege fees for the access to the increased capacity and as a means of underwriting the cost. However, in my case, this is important, there's no additional flow going into the sewer from this powder room. Anybody who would use this powder room, if, if it wasn't there, would otherwise have just gone into the house to use the bathroom. Maybe there'd be some wet marks on the floors, but there's no additional flushes as a result of this powder room being outside. There's no additional family that's being shoved into a area that's less than 50 square feet. It can't ever be expanded to be a dwellings. The dwelling by mass code has to be at least 150 square feet. It's shorter that by three times. So I just, I'm, I'm just want to make sure that I understand the intent of assessing privilege fees. Are they to, you know, keep us from charging for people who really start to tax our sewer, sewer system? And an outdoor powder room, which literally, literally is an outhouse or an outdoor sink by a bar, to me, that doesn't seem like the spirit in which we started to do privileges. So I'd love for the select board, which I think is the right board, uh, to be, to be weighing in on the policy. And, and just if we could go back to the very first page of this document, um, the, in the background you were provided, it references in 2005, a memo to all sewer connection permits. And then it says, "To date, the fee has been applied, quote, 'Each structure on the property was serviced by the town sewer,' unquote." So you would think that that quote's been lifted directly from that memo. But if you look at that memo, you won't find the word structure in there at all. And you won't find the word structure anywhere. But somehow it's become the interpretation of the policy. I'm curious about the gen- genesis of that interpretation and whether that's still in line with why it was voted into the first place. Thank you.
Jim?
Thank you. So, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm a little confused, uh, as to what this agenda item is. Uh, this request, according to the word, request for sewer privilege fee policy interpretation? This, that's an administrative process. Uh, we, we approved, uh, whatever that policy was. Um, and, and I think the right jurisdiction for this is the town manager. Uh, that's who should give an answer to this and using whoever staff, whatever staff she thinks fit, whether that's sewer director. From time to time, we may cap, we may take up other policies and review them and revise them as we see fit, but, um, I don't really, I don't see the need to do that right now personally. So I'm kind of confused. Maybe you can enlighten me on is, are we trying to, is this, I won't speculate as to what we're doing other than, but I, I see this as an administrative process and not a really a discussion about the policy.
Is my understanding, and Libby can chime in here, uh, that you had responded and it wasn't enough, so it was coming to the board for a policy decision because we are the, we act as a sewer board.
So this is a, an appeal? Is this an appeal or, I'm confused, I would just-
Libby, could you help, help out here?
Sure. Through the sewer department, the town administration and sewer department policy has been exactly as is outlined here. And evidently, the individual was not in agreement with that policy and didn't see what he's stated here, the basis of it. It's David and I and others have spent quite a while discussing this. And in the records that the sewer department has, this sewer privilege fee has routinely been charged to pool cabanas. There are, David can talk about how that's been assessed and the policy as far as we can tell has not changed since the beginning. So, um, I guess it's, it's a situation where the individual is coming to you for something different.
So I, I don't know if we need to consider changing the policy tonight personally. I, I would need a lot more information before I could really have a discussion about changing the policy, which we, you know.
But why don't we listen, why don't we listen to David? Why doesn't Da- why doesn't David and staff give us the, some of the information that Jim's asked? I, you know, I know that-
We've heard, we've heard from Libby that the answer is pool cabanas get charged the privilege fees.
Okay, how, or then I'll ask a question. How many, how, since 2005, how many cabanas and pools have there been? David might be, yeah, I assume David knows it, so I'm giving him a loaded question, but.
Wow, I really. David Gray, sewer director. Because of the way that records were kept prior to, within the last couple of years, um, up until, um, about 2014, everything was paper. There was no electronic files. Um, and then they got scanned into the system. I have some examples of screenshots. When they were scanned in, all it was done was by address, nothing else. So in order for us to go back to 2005, it's going to take an ungodly amount of time and more staff to help us get a list. We have an exact number since we've been in existence, which is 13, um, that we've issued, um, sewer privilege fees too. Whether they're called, um, a pool house, a cabana, um, an outdoor patio, it's just different terminologies. And, um, I know that, um, Jim had given some information on, on the shape of the building and some pitches. I can only go by what is submitted to me when they come for the sewer permit. And I have a copy of the plans as they were submitted. And this building was described as a proposed cabana with one bedroom. Is how it was on the plan submitted by your engineer. This is the plan that I had, all I could do to work with. This is what I worked off of.
So, so I have a question, David. If that were submitted as a, if that were ta- if that had a, you know, if, if that had a, uh, an arbor touching the house, you know, over on the other side, would it be a, would it then be a dwelling and subject to a-
If it was connected to the, the main house?
Main house.
If it's connected to the main house, it's just like an addition or, or whatever that gets added on.
And I, cause, cause I, cause I look, you know, I've gone and, and looked at this. It's, it's a tiny bathroom. I, I understand if it's a pool house and I understand people are turning them to second, the second dwellings, they're turning them into guest houses, you know, there's a lot of that going on. I don't believe that that's, you know, I know that that's not what's happening in this situation.
And I don't believe so either. The, the, the thing that brought everything to our attention and which caused me to hold on to his permit for a few months was when we went to do our inspection, um, we were going for the inspection on the two permitted properties. We found a third structure that had sewer run to it, not into the structure yet, but it's, sewer goes to the building with no sewer permit, um, issued on that. It, it allows that building at some point to be connected to sewer and we'll never know unless we continually go back every six months, eight months or whatever and get permission to enter onto the property.
Well, but they'll have to, they'll have to file a building, they'll have to get a, wouldn't they have to get a building permit to do any work on that?
The building's already built. They, they could take and finish the inside without having to go to the sewer department to finish it.
Would they have to call a building permit?
I, a building permit to finish the interior, I don't know what it would actually cost or cost you to-
If you touch any wiring, if you touch anything, I would think. How about the other way? Cause I look at this myself, when I, you know, when I've heard about this, my solution was to take the privilege fee they've paid for the one bathroom and put it on the building you're discussing and call it a day. And I just thought that would be the easy thing, just say, okay, you know, we're, we're going to put it onto this other building and be done with it. Now Jim may not like that or want that. You guys may not go for that, but I just, some of this I think takes longer. Sometimes I think we get into some gyrations over stuff that should be solved fairly simply.
And I don't know if I'd have the jurisdiction to, to do that. The way that the privilege fee is written, it's anyone making an application for a sewer connection permit. So that's any single structure. Yeah. All of these so far, this is the only ones that we can come up with because of the naming conventions. I'm sure there's a lot more.
Don?
I bet there's a lot that haven't been charged.
I, I think we're on a little bit of a slippery slope here because, you know, I, I don't mind having this as a policy discussion, but I think we'd need a lot more information and would really have to come up with something very clear because many of these pool houses are significantly larger. And how does the sewer department really differentiate on whether it has something that could be used for sleeping capacity or how, you know, how many plumbing fixtures it has in there? You know, may, maybe somebody is, has a full outdoor kitchen that has dishwashers and multiple sinks and I just, I, I think that you could, it would, it would be a little bit hard that maybe something could be come up with, you could come up with something where if it was under a certain square footage, maybe it doesn't apply. But, um, I, I know that, that I had a studio and I paid the privilege fee a number of, number of years ago. of years ago. So this has been similar in policy, although I believe since it was instituted. If we're going to make a policy change, I think it's something that we should get some more information, think about what we're going to do, put it on an agenda in that it would be for going forward and not retroactive because I think that that would be really, really cumbersome.
We've had a finding from town council on this that goes behind what we, how we charge the sewer privilege fee. As it stands now, it's, the way we do it is per structure, not per pipe or go into the sewer. It's per structure is the way we do it. And it's the way I've been doing it since we took over. And going back through some of the records that we were going through today to find out, it seems to have been very consistent for at least the past four years. But to pull that data up is going to take some time.
Don't you also, don't you charge two if it's a, if it's a duplex? Like you know that it has two kitchens even if there's a common wall?
Especially if duplexes now can become, not co-op, what's the other word I'm looking for? Condoed out. You could have two separate owners and most, most duplexes have two separate pipes coming out. They might tie in together at the street. We have had a few commercial properties that come in where it's all commercial on the first floor and there could be two or three apartments above.
Do they each pay a fee?
In the past, they have. It's just that that was the previous administration. I haven't had any of those come in yet ourselves. Like I said, it's, there's a lot more information that we could possibly find. We met today. There's, there's still a lot more work to do, but this is how I've been doing it since we took over. And from what we can understand, that's how the previous administrations have done it as well.
So I think if we feel that we need to come back and look at this as a policy decision with more information, we can, if we feel that way and you and town administration thinks we should.
I think we feel very comfortable with the policy. And if there's specific additional, if, well.
And I, I'll just say, just for the record, I'm not comfortable with it. I think it's, you know, I don't think it's a dwelling. And I, and I don't think that we've defined what a structure is. If there was an arbor on this attached to the building, it would be fine. And, and I'm all, you know, you guys are, I'm, I'm all for betterments. I'm all for charging privilege fees. You know, I think we need to capture as much as we can from these dwellings, but in this case, I don't, I don't think it is. I also, my intuition is telling me if we dug into this, I think you'd find it was not evenly applied. So, you know, I think that you'd find that there was some that paid and some that didn't. You know, this is, this struck, but I'm just guessing. I could be wrong, but I'm, you know, my intuition is telling me I'm not. I could be wrong. I, I, this is also a single, you know, this is not two pipes running to this. This is all on one dwelling on one meter. You know, this is, so, you know, I just, you know, if Jim ran an arbor across, you know, across and touched the house, this wouldn't be.
Jim follows the rules and I would pay the fee.
No, I understand, but, and I'm, I'm not arguing that.
I wouldn't come before the board and ask them to change my policy.
Well, if you've been, if you've, if you're.
I just wouldn't use my name. I'm just saying.
No, I understand. I'm not, not you, Jim.
Oh, this Jim. Oh, you kept looking at me.
No, no, no. He's, he's a Jim too.
All right.
I mean, as far as we can see going back, it has been applied. I mean, I have a permit here from 2013 as well, that the only reason we found this is we actually physically had to go into the file and find out that it was a pool house or a cabana. Was it larger than this when it could have been? But consistently since we have been in there, and I have a whole file of all the ones that we've issued.
So you have, so you can break up, if someone wanted to come and look at, you know.
The last two years are specifically so because of the way we've named it. It's going to take some time to get the rest of the years. And I apologize for that, but we'll, we could do it, but it's going to take some time.
Yeah.
May I just make more comment? That is a permit fee or a privilege fee that you're talking about?
Both, the connection, the sewer connection fee and the privilege fee.
I paid two permit fees.
Yes, and you signed both privilege fee letters as well.
And I, I guess the only thing I would just say towards Libby's comments is there's, there's not a lot of clarity for the public as to the policy. If this is what we have, then unconnected properties does not say any structure, you know, a sink, an outdoor, you know, bathroom, an outdoor shower that's connected to the sewer, a scallop shanty. I mean, it, it's not clear. There's a great, great deal of gray area, I think. And if you guys had lengthy discussions about it, I would suggest that maybe get memorialized somewhere so that there isn't a gray area. And I would suggest that you discuss it and maybe tie a privilege fee to something that potentially could be a dwelling. By mass code, you have to have 150 square feet in order to have, be a legal dwelling. Anything smaller than that can't be. Mine's less than 50 square feet.
And just to be clear, I have the copy of the permit that was here and Jim was the one who filled it out himself with one kitchen sink, one lavatory, one water closet, one shower and one dishwasher is how the permit was filled out on the screen. And by the plan, it showed to me that there was going to be a betterment. That's all I could go, I couldn't go off of, I could only go by what was, I was handed.
And what you just described, I, I would agree deserves to be charged. If it had a bed, I understand what you described. If it had a bedroom and had a shower and all that, if it walks like a duck and talks like a duck, it's a duck. But I, you know, I don't think that this is the situation that we have right here.
Well, when we go do inspections, we don't physically go in to the, we only go to the outside. That's where our jurisdiction stops. But this is how, this is all I could go by.
Right, so we did have to look.
So are you saying that if you would come and look at it, you might have a different interpretation of what it is?
I have no jurisdiction inside the, anything from 10 feet outside, I have no jurisdiction inside the building.
Can I request that they come and look at the property?
No, 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 not here. I mean, you can, you can talk to town administration on that, but we're, we're at a policy level. We're not being asked to waive anything. We're looking to interpretation of the policy. I liked what Don had to say, that we, if we do want to decide that we need to relook at it, we can at a later date with more information. I think you also said, but not, it's not retroactive. And if it does need to be cleaned up, I have no problem with amending any of our policies. That's, that's common. But I'm not seeing anything here from our department heads or town administration that we need to change anything at this point unless the board feels differently.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
You know, I made it clear. I feel differently. I think there's, there should be some common sense in some of this stuff. And, and so if, if we're going to do this, I think we should be looking at this and coming up with, you know, a, you know, we should, we'd be improving our rules so that they reflect common sense.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think we should look at it.
Yeah. And some of this, I, I think was, let me say, you know, some of the, we can't do that, we can't do this, that's not legal, I can't do that. Sometimes I feel like we're lost in the, you know, we're lost in the sort of the minutia and the, you know, I don't know. It's just, it feels somewhat passive aggressive to me at times, you know. One, there's, there's something going on in Maticat where someone's building something and we, everyone knows it's going to be a dwelling, but oh, we, until they make it a dwelling, you know, we can't do anything. I just think that the town needs to, our enforcement needs to be approved and we need to, you know, and we need to actually look at these things. And we need to make rules with the facts in front of us, you know? Not like, well, we think there's a lot and we don't know and, you know, I'm guessing, they're guessing. We should actually put the facts together and figure it out. Anyway.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm sorry, with all due respect, we its tenure at the sewer department, which precedes 2016, the pool cabanas have always been charged the sewer privilege fee. So if there are other specific things you all want to look at, and I don't, I don't disagree, they could probably be clearer. That's a, that's a good point, but I don't think it's going to change the fact that these things are going to be charged. The staff is dealing with the rules and policies and regulations before them and that's, I don't know what else to say about it.
No, I think it's great summarization of today. Any other comments on that?
No.
Team SB. We're on to town manager's report.
Okay, as Brian is going to come up, he's going to represent this item, but just for the board's recollection, at the, in the 2017 fiscal 2017 audit management letter, there was a recommendation that we modify, amend our town financial policy in connection with an OPEB issue, other post-employment benefits. And the management letter excerpt is, is shown here and Brian has the recommended change. Is that?
That's an [inaudible].
Right here, sorry.
Good evening, thank you. So we have added this recommended change to the section of the policy dealing, financial policies dealing with long-term financial forecasting. We have sent this wording to not only our auditor, but to our actuarial Odyssey partners and they have reviewed it and said with a positive endorsement and change the financial policy, they will be able to use the pension funding, full funding, that money to go towards OPEB, excuse me, after 2038, which will significantly reduce our other post-employment benefit liabilities in the future. So it has been cleared by both the auditors and our actuarial associates who do our OPEB funding liability study for us.
Any questions or comments? Matt?
Yeah, there was one, I, I don't have a problem with that first part. The question I had was talking, there was making, changing the discount rate. Can you explain, it was?
They're potentially, are you talking about in the auditor's letter?
Yeah, they talked about changing, and sometimes if it's making it, if it's making it less conservative, I would be worried about changing it.
Yeah, we are still reviewing that. Basically, they're talking about changing the long-term investment policy specifically related to stabilization funds and OPEB to allow us greater flexibility to move into equities and other, other things. Because if we have more flexibility, then we can use a different discount rate, but we actually have not as of this date pursued that yet. It's still something we're kind of sorting through, so I have not brought that yet forward as a formal request to change that policy.
And the reason I'm, the reason I'm just showing, just wasting some concern is what government does a lot of times is when it, when the numbers don't work, they just push the length out. So, you know, so they'll just say, oh, well, gee whiz, you know, we don't really have to pay it over 20 years, we'll pay it over 30 years. It'll, do it over 30 years, we'll do it over 40 years. And that way they don't have to change, they don't have to be fiscally prudent and, you know, and they don't have to be careful with how they spend the money. And I just want to make sure we as a town and as a board are not adopting those types of things.
Yeah, we, that's one that we haven't done yet. It may be something we do in the future with a little bit of loosening, but it's not something that we're advocating for as of today.
I didn't think so. I just wanted to make sure.
That's fine.
Do you need a motion to, for this amendment?
Yes, please, Mr. Chairman.
I'll make that motion.
For a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, on to the good stuff, the strategic plan presentation. All right, I'm going to come out here and get started. It's all yours. So first off, I can't believe there's not 150 people packed in this room. This is exciting stuff. Sudders, I can see it in your face. So we're here to present the strategic plan that the select board and town administration has been working on for around 12 months. It's been more meetings than we can count. This is on top of our regular schedule. And today, we're here for two reasons, to show where we are at a kind of bigger picture to the public and then get any public feedback. There's not 100 people here in the room, so probably be a lot of feedback, but we want to show you kind of how we got to where we are today. And then in September, roughly September, October, we should have the final presentation for you and all the details. So this is going to be a little bigger picture. And let's see, how do I get to the? It's supposed to push a button and strategic plan, it was supposed to appear, so. It's going to go right into there. So I'm going to open up with Mr. Kelly. Jim is going to talk to, talk to us about the process of a strategic plan, why it's important. And if it wasn't for Jim, we wouldn't be here talking about this. When Jim was chair, he really pushed the current board to have a strategic plan. And it's not something that's really been, other things, similar things have been done, comprehensive plans, but not a strategic plan. And Jim really pushed for it. And some things happened, didn't happen that, that first year, then right as Rita and I came along, it happened. And so the last 12 months, we've been doing this. And I just want to thank Jim for his leadership on this, because we wouldn't be talking about it today without Jim's leadership. So Jim, you, you as.
Just a couple of thoughts. So when, when I joined the board, running the town's very complex, serving on this board's very complex, and it was really hard for me to understand kind of what the overarching kind of mission was or overarching goals for the, for the town were. And also I think it was very difficult to kind of prioritize. I think it was also difficult as a board member to give guidance to the, to the town administration and town manager about what was important. We found little time to really deal with important policy issues and very much in a routine of reviewing liquor licenses and warrant articles and those kinds of things. So I thought it was, it was really important as a, as a leadership. This is the body that's charged with developing overall policies for the town, reflecting the entire citizenry. For us to step back and really kind of brainstorm and, you know, what we wanted Nantucket to be. In fact, we even used some, you know, some language early on about Nantucket 2050 and those kinds of things. So the board really came together and I think as a result, we've come up with a document and really a living document that you'll see. And I think it's done several things. One is it's, I think we've come to the conclusion, I know I have and others have spoken, that our strategic plan really maximizes and really highlights the commonalities that we as a board feel, and it was a way for us to really focus on those rather than our differences. It gives us some very measurable things that we've, we believe we should be able to accomplish. It also gives town administration kind of a scorecard for, from the, from the board's perspective. And I think will, and help us kind of apply when new issues come up or new questions come up, we can talk about whether they fit into our plan or not. So thank you, Jason. I look forward to hearing what the rest of my colleagues have to say.
Thank you, Jim. So we looked at our goals. We had, we had to, we had goals that were so big that we wouldn't get to them and finish and really complete them in 30 years. Or maybe they weren't measurable. So we looked, the SMART goal, this is a very kind of a universal way of establishing goals. Everything that we looked at had to be specific, measurable, achievable, relevant and time bound, time bound. I don't know how many times we would come up with something and it wouldn't fit all of those. And we'd kind of go back to the drawing board. So this was kind of guided us to get to these three areas, housing, transportation and the environment. So these are the three areas that we're focusing on in the strategic plan. This is, these three topics touch everybody. Doesn't matter how old you are, if you're here for a day, if you're here for the summer, you live here year-round, no matter how much money you make, housing, transportation, environment hits everybody. And so that's why we picked these three areas. So what's the elephant in the room? Will my project be done? Will you disregard my bike path or my senior center or coastal resiliency or marijuana regulations, all these things that do come up in front of the board? Because it doesn't fit into our strategic plan, are we not going to do it? No, this is not a mandate. This is in, pretty much in line with the master plan, housing production plan, capital program committee and the capital plans. So this is more in line with everything. It doesn't mean that something that comes to us, it's, it's just going to be thrown to the side. So I've got that question a lot during this whole process. I think we all have about these different projects. What it does mean is housing, transportation and the environment. We have certain goals underneath this, strategic goals and action steps. We're not going to take our eyes off the ball on these items, right? We're being proactive about it and we're saying we're not going to take our focus off. And that's why the strategic plan, kind of what Jim was saying, is to give us guidance. So the metaphor that I've used a couple of times, and it kind of works, if you imagine the select board, select board as a person in a phone booth and you're trying to make that really important phone call for the housing or the environmental solution, you just can't make the phone call because there's all these bees in the phone booth buzzing around and all you're doing is you're just reacting all the time. You can't. all you're doing is, you're just reacting all the time. You can't make the phone call. That's what Jim was talking about in the beginning is, we're just, we're reacting all the time and not focusing on bigger policy issues. It doesn't mean we're not going to still do all the, the projects that come in front of us, but it's to give us focus. So for me, the phone booth analogy is, is the best in my mind for allegory. Okay, so now we're gonna move over. Um, so Dawn, Matt and Rita are gonna talk about each of these topics and briefly on the goals. If anybody has any questions afterwards, we can go there. So Dawn's gonna start on housing.
When we, um, when we started to just define our three broad goals, housing came up as, it definitely floated to the very top for all of us. Um, I look at housing as a real human issue for our community, a quality of life issue, to be able to have accessible, financially accessible housing, safe, clean housing and, and just even housing options for people. Um, I think we all know how difficult that's been on Nantucket for years and continues to be more and more challenging. And even for those of us who are lucky enough to own a home or to have a secure rental, you know, the, this issue touches everyone. It touches our friends, our family, um, and it touches our workforce of the community that provides services and contributes, people who contribute to the arts and just, it, it touches a little bit of everyone's life, even if it's not completely direct. Um, so our number one goal was to get at the SHI. The SHI is the subsidized housing inventory and it's something that we, um, are mandated by the state to have 10% SHI units available on Nantucket. It's something we've got to be proactive about. You know, it takes at least a year to build a house, probably another six months in planning and permitting before you even start. Um, and it is important for us to get to the 24 units a year over the next three years because that allows us a safe, a safe harbor from what we would, from an unfriendly 40B. And it is actually very timely because there is currently a 40B that we don't really have local control over and, um, it's definitely disrupted the feelings of a neighborhood. And we actually could have been at this goal if a pro, the project that we've been working on at Six Fairgrounds wasn't in appeal. And we would have been in safe harbor. So it's just, you know, there's, there's a lot of things going on. Um, then number two, um, this is to plan for our own needs as a town, for our employees, to really, um, get at what our seasonal and year-round housing needs will be now and coming into the future. We have people who've been lo, long-time town employees that own their homes and it's getting harder for the new employees coming in to be able to break that threshold. So we've really got to do a lot of planning. And that's really what goal number two is getting at, um, define, identifying all of our options and trying to create more efficiencies by putting all of our seasonal housing together on bus service routes. Those kind of things are what we've been talking about. Then we have number three, which is, you know, continued planning and analysis to really get at all levels. We've had a lot of things come in recently that get at, um, 80% of median income. And we have a great covenant program that's been successful in terms of people being able to purchase, um, purchase homes that go up to 150% of median income. But there's really needs from 30 to 200 in all different unit sizes, rental, ownership. This is just, you know, continuing the process of analyzing what we can do, what we already have in place that can be improved and, um, getting further goals achieved within the, the next three years.
Thank you, Dawn. And all, everything that, these three goals really fall in line with the master plan and house production plan. So we're not, um, deviating off of any other committees or boards. Next up, we have transportation. Matt's gonna walk us through those.
All right. Uh, the first goal we have, goal number one, is by the summer of 2020, we want to launch a downtown parking management system based on demand management principles that are, achieves or is measured by 85% occupancy of public parking spaces. And basically, this is, we have to value, uh, the spaces that we have downtown. Uh, they are, there are times in the summer where 110, 115% full. People are parking on the yellow lines and across, uh, across, they're parking on all the sidewalks. There's things that we need to, you know, we, so we need to, uh, you know, we've talked about putting in parking for years. This board has finally, uh, you know, made a motion to do that. And there's a group working on that. Uh, they're looking at what the best way to do that downtown is, uh, whether that's, you know, there's a couple of different ways to do it. And so that's number one. Uh, number two is by 2021, complete at least one key sidewalk route connecting Mid Island, defined as where we are today, Six Fairgrounds, to the ferries with improved standards of accessibility. Uh, this was one of the, this goal came out of a lot of discussion we had in the transportation group because there's so many sort of different issues. We were trying to find one, you know, we are working, we've got, I think it's a million dollars this year, a million dollars next year fixing sidewalks and things downtown. But we were saying, what is, you know, how can we, you know, make the island more, more pedestrian friendly? How can we connect? You know, it's, it's not that far a walk from the Mid Island to downtown. It's just difficult when there's telephone poles and trees and, you know, and we're missing sidewalks. So we said it would be, we're already planning to fix a lot of it, you know, but if we could find a way to connect those two safely, it would go a long way to people actually using it. And then transportation, goal number three, uh, and this one came out of the work group we have. Uh, and it is shift the mode of choice of commuters from driving alone to using other modes by 6%. I think we may have to change the driving alone bit because people kind of don't, you know, don't quite get what we mean. But basically, it's we have to find ways to get people out of their cars. At our busiest times, there are, uh, in the summer, it's, it's warm, it's beautiful out. They, people should be walking and biking, you know, unless you're going to the Stop and Shop or doing something where you need your car, we should make it possible for people to get on the bus and move around different ways. When you go to places, Aspen and Telluride and places you visit and you, you don't even need a car. Like, we need to have that, we need to, you know, as a board, we decided we need to make that a, you know, sort of our goal. You know, you can't, we aren't building any more roads. You can't, we have about 25,000 cars now and at peak season, and we're, we added three 500 this year. You know, we can't, we can't, you can't work ourselves out of the problem without having alternatives. And so what goal number three, by, you know, by saying, by putting the challenge out of, you know, finding other alternatives and making them, uh, making people want to use them, I think we wanted to make that, you know, sort of front and center. This is what we're trying to do. We're trying to, you know, change, you know, and we're not trying to make it inconvenient, but we're trying to make it so convenient and so nice that people will use it. A bike path for, you know, people don't use, we, we have great bike paths, except you can't get from town to the bike paths. So we're concentrating on, you know, things like connecting those, connecting so people can bike back before safety from town. Once, and we, if you look around town, the DPW has striped some stuff now and they've just put the yellow li, the white line, you know, where it should be. And all of a sudden, there's space for bikes and it, it's safe for them to go down some of the roads in town. So I think some of this is just us as a community looking at other modes and giving them just as much importance as we give the vehicle. And I think that's, you know, so that's why we came up with sort of, you know, I wanted to call it get people out of their cars, but we had to put a fancy name to it. And it had to be able to be measured. And so, you know, we've got the 6% and we've got some numbers that Mike Burns can measure so we can put against it. You know, I, we're not gonna let those numbers drive what we do. You know, we're gonna take actions that may do good things that might not reflect the numbers, but I think it's important. And so those are the transportation goals.
Thank you, Matt. Next up, we have the environment. Rita's gonna take us through that.
So, uh, the environmental leadership goal was one that I think was a little bit of a surprise that it came through the process and ended up being one of the three areas of priority. Um, and pretty quickly, we realized that it was a big topic that I don't think as a town, we had really considered it at this level. We'd looked at things a little more specifically within the framework of, um, specific issues like water quality. So, um, you know, it really is so broad that it touches almost every aspect of the town's operations in some ways. And we found it difficult at first to sort of choose what was going to be our focus. Um, a sustainability office was an initial, an initial goal, later became an action step. But that was sort of an initial goal because it was acknowledging how big this issue was and that we might need someone in charge of helping us focus. But we ended up with, um, the goal number one, which is providing data-driven recommendations on island-wide solid waste management guided by principles of sustainability. So where this came from was, we really saw the contract expiring in 2025 as a major opportunity and also with the complexity of waste management as an island, as well as the complexity of waste in general and how quickly innovations change, as well as it ultimately being a commodity. So it just has these layers of complexity that it's important for us to be discussing this now. And I think it's, it's a goal that we have a lot of potential and opportunity to do something very visionary. We definitely have some practical, um, and logistical issues that we have to clear, we have to take care of. And that's really where the data-driven part of this goal came from. And this came out of the work group and it was a fantastic grounding recommendation by, uh, DPW. And basically saying, we have a lot of information out there. Before we choose one strategy, um, for the future, we need to look at the information that we have on the waste that we have on island, make the recommendations based on that. The island-wide, the island-wide wording also came from a department head from Roberto, saying that we really need to look at this as from a whole island, not just what is happening at the landfill, but what is happening in homes, offices, buildings, boats, everywhere. And then the principles of sustainability is the part of this goal that helps us keep it somewhat visionary. So we have two very grounding elements of being island-wide and data-driven. Um, but we would like the next iteration of the, the dump and the landfill to be, to be better. And there's opportunities for that financially and functionally. The second goal was an addition that came out of, um, the work groups with the department heads. And I think it was a, a very important goal that our board, again, with the, with the sort of the scope and the scale of the other environmental goal with the dump, we did maybe overlook a little bit how much we were doing with water quality. So, uh, both, uh, Board of Health and DPW felt that we needed to keep water quality out there and make sure that going forward, it is, um, a goal that this board and future boards have. And so this goal really captures what we're already doing, as well as making sure that we continue to do, um, everything we can to maintain our water quality.
Thank you, Rita. All right. Before I get to next steps, um, I wanted to kind of reiterate the collaborative nature of this. So we probably spent nine months meeting among ourselves and town administration with a facilitator, Janice Kinder, is that her last name? Kinder? And she did a really great job. And when that contract ended with her, Janet and Chuck, Janet Schulte and Chuck Larson stepped in as our facilitators to, to finish it up and keep us focused on finishing the strategic plan. So I wanted to thank Janet and Chuck for all their, all their work. And also how nice it was to get in a room with all the select board and town administration and kind of dig into these things. It doesn't really happen a lot. So it was very, it was very collaborative. And once that happened over the 10 months, then we went to the department heads. We got in a big room and all the department heads looked at it and gave us feedback. So once these housing goals were edited and tweaked a little bit by the planning office and Tucker and Andrew, so we got feedback from department heads. It wasn't us just sitting down in a room and saying, here, here you go. Um, so Rita, you touched on that a couple of times, working with Rob in Public Works on tweaking some of these, these ideas and goals. Next steps, we're hoping to have this, correct me if I'm wrong, completed and presented in September, October? I'm getting, shaking my head, September? Could be.
October.
Or October. Um, and it's also, we're going to be re, like, relooking at this every year, right? Because the board changes every year. That was one of the things we talked a lot about in the beginning is how do we have a strategic plan when two-fifths of your board could change almost every other year? And so it's, it's under my, my assumption that these bigger transportation, environment, housing will not change. We might tweak it as we go. We'll relook at it every year. But hopefully these projects and goals can be done in a three-year term. That was the, that was the time bound. And I also wanted, just wanted to say one more time, this is not a mandate. Just wanted to throw it out there. So now I'd like to give it to the, the board to talk about anything and then open up for the public to talk, if they'd like to. The town administration?
Sure, I'll make a comment. Um, I would say that this is probably in my time here, the most comprehensive discussion and process that the board has had. Um, I would say, and I'm not really just saying this, every one of you were very comfortable expressing opinions. There were disagreements in a polite, respectful way and they were worked through. They didn't just end there and keep going. Um, you really were careful to include town admin in all of your discussions, as well as the department heads. And I think you were very receptive to feedback and, and remain so. And I, so I really appreciate it and I really, um, was glad to have gone through the process with all of you. I think it sort of, um, built a stronger sort of working foundation and, and that kind of thing. And the iterations that are gonna come out of this, I think will be healthy for us. And it definitely helps town admin, um, guide ourselves towards budget recommendations, capital project recommendations, things like that. That sort of guidance has been sort of, not totally missing, but not as right in front of us as we've needed it to be. So, so that's, I think is going to be really helpful. And, um, I think it'll be helpful for you all as well to explain things to the public and others about where our priorities lie. So thank you all for going through it.
Thank you for bringing up the consensus part. We did disagree and battle through a lot of ideas, but at the end, there was full consensus, you know?
Yeah, the consensus was, that was similar to the comprehensive plan. We didn't move on, and this is 20 years ago, but we, that, that document, we didn't go, move on until everyone pretty much agreed they could live with it. And that's, you know, that was, uh, important then for, for what we did. And I think, you know, it's, it's important to be doing that again now. Uh, you know, I think, one of the, it's interesting, one of the things you hear from people is, oh, you know, that there won't be, other things won't happen. Well, some things that aren't in here are because they're already being done. You know, things, you know, there are things that are underway that we know are underway and are well under control that didn't need to be focused on. So I think that was, you know, that was one of our filters, so.
Yeah, I felt like these were, um, broader, more proactive things that we really needed to get at and find our common ground of what we could really accomplish. And moving forward, I'm, we've split off into subcommittees and I've been on the housing committee. And it's just been really helpful working with like the, the planning staff and the house, housing office staff, um, in terms of tweaking this and really figuring out what our action steps are going to be. And I just, Andrew's here, so I want to thank him for all of his efforts. And he's been putting a lot of effort forth on housing for a long time.
Yeah, I think it's definitely helped push us to find out what's, what's planning doing, what's planning board doing, right? Making sure we're all on the same page. That's one thing that came out of this. That was, that was a benefit, I believe.
Listening, uh, listening to your presentations, I mean, it's a, um, it was an expression of, uh, goals and vision and hopes that I've never heard here. I mean, it was, it was, uh, it was wonderful to hear and, and I, and you could just hear from the language we used, that it's very different than our routine conversations. And it really reflects everything that Jason said that, you know, that, uh, you know, that he and Dawn led us through, uh, over the last two years.
Your thoughts? Any other thoughts, comments, in the public? Have any questions? Okay. I think we're going to move on to selectman committee reports. Select board member committee reports. Everybody trying to think if they went to anything?
Yeah.
Uh, I know Dawn and I went to, and I believe Andrew was there, the marijuana forum that the Chamber and ACFM held at the Nantucket Inn. The chairman of the Cannabis Control Commission was there, and it was quite informative.
Yeah, he was great. I had a lot of questions.
Dawn had a lot of questions, yeah.
Did he help clarify all of the questions that you had?
Yeah, yes. We can get, we can get at that a little more when we talk about it next time.
I think it was, what was on, we've been digging into these regulations and policy and everything for a while, what's going on in the annual town meeting, special town meeting. But it was nice to hear how they looked at California, Colorado, these other states, and said, yeah, we don't want to do it that way. Here's why we put this regulation in, or this policy. It was good. Any other, any other reports?
Well, I missed that, ended up at the Behavioral Health Task Force event, which was fantastic. It was really well done, and I think, um, you know, it was surprising that it was one of the first opportunities where all these organizations working in the same field had a chance to meet like that. And just reviewing what each group is doing was helpful for everyone that was there. So, it was, it was very well done, and the services they're providing are so invaluable. I hope that it continues to gain more momentum.
NPD C met on Monday. There was some of the typical road stuff, that we spent a lot of time on the, sort of the roundabouts, and, uh, so, you know, giving direction on that. Still haven't quite figured out, you know, what should go in, uh, sort of near the school, not across from the school. Bartlett Road is pretty well sorted out, and it sounds like there is going to be a sidewalk on the school side, which originally it wasn't showing on the plan. I think that's been improved, uh, but there's still, we're still trying to figure out, or the, you know, the board, what recommendation to give this board on how to handle a roundabout there. And the more I thought about it, and this kind of came with a discussion with Chuck, with Rob after, the more I thought about it, is we may have to change our thinking because do we really, is that the, is that intersection in this Prospect Street where we should be sending all the trucks? You know, that seems, that's the truck route. It's the reverse truck route. It's the way we get to the dump. But when you start to really look at the size of those streets, this is my thought, this isn't the committee, I start to wonder, is there another way? Should we be going, you know, Fairgrounds to Bartlett, over to Maticat somewhere? Or should be, when we talk about the dump, I think we should be thinking about moving the dump maybe out to the, out by the airport, into the, you know, away from the wetlands and out to the airport, and make it really, you know, more of a transfer station and a, however we talk about it, we should be looking at that option because just, I'm not so, because what happens, and when I look, think about it, I say, what's going to happen next? We, we make a roundabout and things run smoothly by the hospital and the school intersection, and then they get to Caton Circle, and then where do they go? And are we going to, you know, are we going to move bodies and make a roundabout at Caton Circle? I think the downtown historic district, they're kind of not, it's not, they're not appropriate places to do this. And so, is he laughing? And I understand.
You said move bodies. Took me a while to me, to realize you were talking about the cemetery.
And there's no headstones. We don't know where to, we won't, where to dig, but.
Catherine would, would just be.
Oh, I know. No, so, so, but anyway, it just, it got me, I think, it, it's sort of a chance, like we're trying to think bigger on the, you know, strategic plan, I think we have to think bigger on transportation and some of those things because we can't change, we're not going to change some of those roads. We're not going to change our downtown. You know, the trucks and the, the cars and trucks and things should fit there, not the other way around. And so, I think that still has to be sorted out, although, you know, I think there's broad support at the NPD C for roundabouts and the safety aspects, and, you know, certainly they're appropriate in a lot of these areas. But I think, you know, at least me as one person is questioning how appropriate they are at Caton Circle, or how appropriate they are, you know, really at that corner, you know? So, I think, you know, it's, it's positive, but there's still work to be done. And of course, it all comes to us, and it all goes to the voters. So, we have to put forth, you know, something that's well fought through and, you know, and will be accepted.
Actually, two Fridays ago, I went to the Cape and Islands Selectman Councilman meeting, uh, which was in Hyannis, which was very convenient. It was directly across from the High Line, uh, and I think they did that for us. They were incredibly welcoming. I went with Tobias Glidden and Peter Kaiser, and they, they spoke about the request for the small mesh fishing ban from May, I believe it's May 1st to October 31st, without having it in front of me, and there was unanimous support from that group. So, it was just, it was, it was a successful trip, and it was great to get to know some of those people and talk about their, their worries about the marijuana issue and about housing issues and all kinds of stuff. I highly recommend, that was just the first time I'd had the opportunity to actually get to one, and it was, it was really good.
Yeah, I agree. They've been, everyone, they've been fantastic with great information.
Rita and I went to one in Falmouth, like, right when we got on the board, we went to that first one, and they all clapped for us the week ends. It was just so hard to get there.
Yeah. There was one person from the vineyard, too.
Yeah.
I know I'm not part of your committee reports, but just wanted to tell you a couple of things about your agenda for next week. You've got a lot of real estate next week. You've got your committee appointments. We're having a discussion about warrant articles for the special town meeting on October 10th. And you have a, you will have a draft letter in front of you for the Surfside Crossing 40B application to the zoning board of appeals, which they have requested. And I think you will also be having a discussion about a traffic study that they have asked for, so, FYI.
I like that addition to selectmen's comments, just like what's, what's coming up next. Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.